Good evening. I'd like to call the October 21st meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order and welcome those who are here in person tonight. Good to see everyone. And also welcome those who are watching on our YouTube channel. Welcome to you as well. As is a couple of announcements. One is Vice Chairman Harris will not be here tonight. He was not feeling the best, so he will be watching us, I'm sure. Hello, Vice Chair. I know you're watching. And I also did want to mention our six priorities that we, this board has established, and they are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, which we will hear some tonight, public safety, and our county employees. I do want to add, this is Employee Appreciation Week, and on the front end, thank our county employees for all that they do for us and the citizens of this county. So with that, we will proceed on as customary with invocation, and I've asked Commissioner Stevens to lead us in that, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I've asked Commissioner Smith to lead us in that, so if you choose so, please stand for the invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we begin this meeting. Grant us the clarity to make decisions that honor and serve our community with integrity and fairness. May we work together in unity and respect, putting the needs of those to be served among all else. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be seated. Except for you. All right, the first item we have on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there any need to make any changes to the agenda? Or I hear a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. And we are fortunate tonight, the first regular item on the agenda is recognition of Little Miss Benson, which is Holland Brooke Harper. So Ms. Harper, very nice to have you here with us. I'll turn it over to you.
And not still with thunder, but I almost said aye.
Hold on one second. And I was remiss in not introducing our former Commissioner Chad Stewart. So Chad, thank you for being here. Now, Ms. Harper, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board, for doing this. Let them know who you are, girl.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Holland Brooke Harper. I'm your Little Miss Benson, 2024, 2025. Thank you for having me tonight.
Well, thank you. So can I ask you a question? Can we get a picture with you? Can Mr. Chad be in the picture too? Are you sure about that? Okay. Well, let's 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 see how the family wants to come up too, but let's.
And Mr. Chairman, I got something I do want to read on behalf of.
Okay, all right. Well, can we let Mr. Chad read something for us while you can step down, and we'll get the stool up here so you can stand up here too. So there we go. Thank you.
Thank y'all for doing this.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
All right, I'm a little bit new at this. I'm standing on this side, but it is. But first of all, thank you for what y'all do every day. I know what it means. I know the thankless job you have. I know the dedication it takes. And I appreciate what each and every one of you do. Just a bit about BAWO. And I'm very careful on how to say this word. Benson Ministerial Association. So I didn't want that to come across the wrong way, but it was founded in 1985. We're 20 members strong. We are at a 501(c)(3) organization that puts money back in our local community. Our projects, Little Miss Benson Paget, Junior Miss Benson Paget, two annual Bingos, two music shows a year, two flower sales a year. We participate, when I say we, I'm not a member. I'm just speaking for the organization. We participate in Christmas on Main, Benson's Veterans Day, which means a lot to me. And I know it does y'all. Celebration, Parks and Recs events. We give money to South Johnston Scholarships, $1,000 each year to BAWO, Thanksgiving Meal, local money to the food bank, Benson Police Department, Friday Night Hoops, Benson's Veterans Day Celebration, which naturally means a lot to me. Support the Chamber for Mule Day Activities and Sundown in downtown. Support the Benson Scene Convention. Serve several other areas as they are needed. They were asking me to speak on that, as it pertains to Little Miss Benson.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Stewart. And let's get a, let's get a picture right quick.
Howlin', did you have to do a talent? What was your talent?
I will send each member one of you one of her talents. That was very good.
I don't think he could have picked a better one.
Yeah.
Here, let's give you something. April, if you want, if you squeeze around.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little bit weird.
Do we come over or in?
You get in the middle. Turn around that way and look that way. There we go. Uh-uh.
Chelsea, they'll get pictures and send them to us. Tyler, y'all better come get the picture.
No.
We'll make them, we'll screen the room on YouTube.
Everybody smile. I'm gonna take three. One, two, three.
Get him in there.
Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Holland.
Yeah, thank you.
She sure has a stage presence.
Oh, yeah, she does.
All right, no pressure, but our last two, Miss Johnston Counties went on to be Miss North Carolina, Miss America's team, so no pressure. But we've got big goals for you.
That's right. And I will say, if y'all have bedtime needed, you're welcome to leave whenever you need to, say. You don't have to stay for the whole thing.
And not take the thunder, but beauty pageants can be misconstrued a different way. I don't know how to really say it, but it involves talent, confidence, it instills in girls that they can achieve. It gives them a voice. It's not all about makeup and beauty. It's about presence and being able to get on the public stage. That's our future. That's who's gonna be sitting here one day. But thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda, and we have four items on there tonight. The first one is approval of a minutes from September 16th, both the morning, excuse me. It says 3:30 and 6:00 PM, so we must have had a special meeting then. Oh, okay, we did. I was at the beach, that's why I don't remember that. Yeah, yeah, it's Selma. So the other, we have additions to the DOT system. We have a request to surplus a couple of vehicles from the Sheriff's Office, and we have an appointment to the Meadow Firefighters' Relief Fund Board of Trustees. And is there any need to remove any item from the agenda? A consent agenda? All right, I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposed, nay? The consent agenda is approved. All right, next up, we have public comments, and this is for any item that is not already on the agenda. Is there, if somebody could wave to me, is there anyone here wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one move. And Madam Clerk, we did not have any emails. Okay. All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and Caregivers Month. And we have our Register of Deeds, Craig Olive here to present that to us. And I've asked Commissioner Godwin, when we get to the point, to read that proclamation for us. So, Mr. Olive, floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And on behalf of the caregivers and the family that has been affected with Alzheimer's, we really appreciate y'all making this for us this coming up month.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Godwin?
Craig and the Citizens and Senior Services Group have been instrumental in observing this event every year, and I totally support it. I'm sure there's a lot of families in here. My family was affected by Alzheimer's, and I know Craig's was. So let me read this. Proclamation of Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and Caregivers Month. Alzheimer's, whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and ability to perform self-care. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the seventh leading cause of death in United States, killing more people than breast and prostate cancer combined. And whereas it is also the seventh leading cause of death in North Carolina and also here in Johnston County. And whereas one in three senior citizens dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia, and more than half of all Americans know someone who has or had Alzheimer's. And whereas more than 6 million Americans are now living with Alzheimer's disease, with over 210,000 residing in North Carolina. And whereas Alzheimer's disease affects more whole families, since it is a long-term illness that requires long-term care. And whereas over 11 million family members and friends are serving as their unpaid caregivers nationwide, 373,000 of those giving care are North Carolinians. And whereas an estimated 18.4 billion hours of care, valued at nearly $347 billion, was provided to those with Alzheimer's and other dementias in 2023. And whereas almost 2/3 of Americans with Alzheimer's are women, the cost for caring for those with Alzheimer's and other dementias is estimated to total $360 billion in 2024. By 2050, these costs could rise to nearly $1 trillion. One in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and families can gain access to treatment medications, enroll in critical research trials, and fully participate in planning for the future. And whereas the Johnston County Board of Commissioners recognizes individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the educational programs and support services provided by Alzheimer's organizations. Therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and Caregivers Month in Johnston County, and urges our citizens to commend its observance. Proclaim this 21st day of October 2024. I move that this be adopted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Do I have a second? Motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Proclamation is approved. Thank you, Mr. Olive. All right, the next item up is a presentation from the Johnston County Chapter of Down Home, North Carolina. And I believe we have Mr. Natasha Chapman here to present to us. But Ms. Allen is gonna come up and kick it off. Ms. Lynn, sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Lynn. Hey, y'all. Oh, yeah, great. Y'all have our slides. Thank you.
Yeah.
We're doing, we're doing better. Y'all doing good. I don't know how to use it though. Okay, there I'm going.
Yeah, so you can look that way. You don't have to look sideways. So you look right there. So you're good.
Okay. Jennifer, oh, there we go. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that, y'all. Well, hello, y'all. My name is Elizabeth Lynn. I'm a Clayton resident and organizer with Down Home NC, our Johnston County chapter. And we would like to thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. We had a few meetings with Butch to discuss the Central Pines Regional Council grant proposal, and we wanted to discuss some specific project ideas and advocate to the entire board on a few proposals we believe that could utilize the IRA funding to support Johnston County residents. I'll pass it over, or let me, let me go to our second slide. Sorry about that. Just for anybody that doesn't know about us, we are a group that is committed to improving the lives and empowering the voice of working class people in Johnston County. And we believe that the funding through the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, can address energy costs, improve infrastructure, and enhance the community's health and resilience, which falls under our four pillars that we stand for, which is economy for all, healthcare for all, housing for all, and education for all. And with that being said, I would like to pass it over to Jennifer to talk about our first proposal.
Thank you all so much. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Eisen. I am the Climate Justice Campaigner at Down Home, North Carolina. I live in our neighboring county in Garner, but I work statewide on our climate justice campaigns and policies. Our first proposal that we wanted to share with you all was specifically around how do we take an opportunity to make our schools into resilience hubs? The opportunity here is to transform Johnston County schools into resilience hubs through decarbonization and the generation of on-site renewable energy. The goal here is to really help lower our emissions and then create healthier environments to make our schools central to climate and action, and most importantly, storm recovery. Resilience hubs are kind of what they sound like. They're an opportunity. They're a place in the community that can really serve as a heart in the, in the case of climate disaster or climate emergency, as we've just seen unfortunately with Hurricane Helene. A couple of points that I think are pretty important is that there are renewable energy subsidies through programs like Solar For All and the Investment Tax Credit. They're the energy efficient funding through the greenhouse gas reduction and the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. Lastly, there are also smaller poles of funding that can also support electric school buses and other transportation initiatives that could go on supporting these resilience hubs. Before we move forward and pass it in to Natasha to share our next proposal, are there any questions at all from you all about the schools?
Any questions?
Or this proposal, this first part? I'll go ahead and pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She makes the order up. It's me next again. But Natasha will go after me, okay? But yeah, our second proposal was around a housing authority project. We believe that collaborating with Johnston County Housing Authority to research the high energy burden faced by low-income residents could pilot a project introducing energy efficient upgrades and renewable energy solutions to reduce the cost for residents. We know that, or we believe that using the IRA money to invest in public housing is gonna be a direct, directly supporting communities most vulnerable to the climate crisis and re-envision what public housing means in our county. Some highlights from this opportunity could be supporting JOCO residents and updating their homes for weatherization, improving their health, and increasing property values for the county. We know that this could be a game-changing opportunity for the living experience of tenants in, in public housing, providing them with HVAC that allows them to be, have better weather, allows them to better weather their new weather. Oh, I'm sorry, this is misprinted. Extreme, to, excuse me.
Better weather, extreme weather.
Yes. Thank you so much. My words got flip-flopped, and then I couldn't read. But thank you so much. So, yeah, we believe that. And then also, with the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund and Solar For All, that program was awarded, the Energize NC Coalition with over $150 million granted to expand the number of low-income and disadvantaged communities prior to residential solar investment. And we fall in a lot of those areas, being rural communities, and they are specifically seeking opportunities to invest in these communities like ours, and we don't want to miss out. So that is a second proposal that we are presenting to you today. And like, if you have any questions, you can let us know. We'll also take them at the meeting.
Okay.
Everyone, I'm Natasha Chapman. I'm a Clayton resident and a Down Home, a member of Johnston County chapter. And so our first and last proposal is to secure funding for a program or to hire someone responsible for educating the community about energy efficiency and IRA opportunities. The IRA offers an array of incentives for homeowners, renters, and landlords that include tax credits and rebates that make energy efficient upgrades and retrofits more accessible to North Carolina members. And so, for example, in this last year, North Carolina residents claimed over $110 million in tax savings by filing the residential clean energy credit for installing solar panels and other renewable energy systems in their homes. This last year, over 60,000 North Carolina residents benefited from the Energy Efficient Home Improvement Credit for upgrades like insulation and heat pumps. This incentive even includes a credit for home energy audits to help residents identify the best areas to invest in for energy savings. And so, while these numbers are a good start, many more residents could take advantage of these incentives through education and support through the next eight years than from the IRA. The city has also been allocated to over $208 million for energy efficient rebates for whole home projects and electric appliances. This will be for low and moderate income households, including single-family homes, multi-family residential buildings, and also incentives for contractors who are working on these projects. And these rebates will roll out in 2025. I believe the Department of Department of Publicity is still trying to figure out what that process is gonna look like. But we definitely want to be prepared to help our residents navigate this process because the reality is that bureaucratic processes can be really difficult to navigate. It took me several months to make sense of some of the IRA, so I can speak in front of you. And so, you can imagine for an average person that, one, understanding the benefits of these incentives, incentives, you know, the benefits on our budget, the benefits in our health and environment. Two, then assessing eligibility, and then also to apply and filing. It can be overwhelming. And so, a community at a future program could kind of bridge this gap in helping individuals guide them through this process and ensure that they're taking full advantage of the opportunities that are available to us. So, any questions?
All right. Any questions? It's, I mean, I guess this is just a general statement. So the grant dollars that you're mentioning is federal money that is flowing to the states for distribution across the, across the state? Okay. And I will add, we do have a couple of partners, and one I want to just acknowledge, Marie Watson with Johnson Lee Hardick Community Action back there, that will, you know, kind of be helping us navigate this and what opportunities are there, along with Central Pines Regional Council that we have been working with and looking to get a little clarification on some things and some proposals from them for what we might be eligible for, specifically the IRA funds and what we can do with that. So thank you for taking the time to come and be with us. Any other questions, comments?
No, just reiterate what the chairman said. Thank you for bringing all these opportunities to our attention for not only, you know, for many of the citizens in Johnston County. It's really appreciated.
Our last question, or last thing we really just wanted to do all with is, Down Home, North Carolina has ongoing partnerships with the Equity Fund, who's contacted us with the North Carolina State Awardee. So there is an opportunity, they agreed to meet with the Johnston County Commissioners, if you all will be willing to meet with them as well. We would really love to get folks, if you all were in, to really commit to meeting with them post the election, once the time slows down a bit. I think this could be a great collaboration and a way to really find Johnston County residents as some of the first people to receive some of these awardees. Other couple of recommendations we have is to create a rent working group, and that will be just a group of folks who could continue taking this work for, from not only now, but until the projects are complete. And that will compose the folks from Down Home, the County Commissioners, Central Pines, and if there are other members of the community that are interested. And then lastly, something that we talk a lot in this field about is developing community benefits agreements, and we call them CDAs. And they really are just an opportunity for the contractors, the companies that are gonna be working and developing these projects, to really get support from the community, and in exchange, the community gets access to these incredible projects that they're able to put on. And these companies have support from the community so they can continue to develop and create these beautiful projects for folks who are in Johnston County. So again, we just thank y'all for the opportunity to share some more specific ideas about not only what the IRA funds could be used for, but directly how we could help support the best. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you.
If you can extend y'all any notes, if y'all need it, or any facts that we can present.
Okay. Well, and thank you for putting the information together for us.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on our Land Development Code update. And Mr. Newton, are you gonna introduce our speakers or guests? All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So this evening, we have the opportunity to bring you an update on our progress with the Unified Development Ordnance Project, which is a rewrite and overhaul of our ordinance, modernizing that, making it more user-friendly. And this is also the next phase.
It does. So this is the next phase. At this time, I'll give it over to Kelly and Cindy. Thank you.
And now you don't have to hold on any longer.
It truly is all about Braston at that point, isn't it? Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kimley Horn. It's always a pleasure. And also, Ms. Stevens, thank you very much for your service. Coming from a military family, I can definitely appreciate that quite a bit. So thank you.
You got these. These two too. Yeah. Reister Smith and Godwin.
So, since I just made a faux pas right there, we're just gonna go and go straight to the presentation. No, I was gonna say, I've got a, my dad was Navy, my son is flying Blackhawks, and my nephew's flying Apaches. So.
Awesome. Thanks, and for their service.
It's always a fun thing. So with me tonight, of course, is Ms. Cindy Swarcoff, who is our deputy project manager, local liaison, and an incredible partner. I know she is well-known to this group as well. But we're here tonight to kind of give you a quick overview, as Braston said, of what we've been working on to this point, what we're going to be doing over the next little bit, and especially for Commissioner Smith's benefit, kind of outlining a couple of things that we're doing as part of Phase One, to, like I said, kind of take a look at a couple of things as it relates to what can we be doing as part of a short-term approach on certain things, but also kind of give you the long-term feel as well. So we're not gonna dive too deep into the code, of course, tonight, but just kind of the three Ps that Cindy and I love to kind of think about. The code is, and the Unified Development Ordnance is about three things. It's about the people, about the place, and about the project. You know, the people are the folks that we have with us on our team. And Cindy and I was reported by a number of folks behind the scenes, from land use planners to engineers to landscape architects, you name it. And then more importantly, it's folks like Braston and Cameron in that group that, you know, truly are a pleasure to work with because, one, they get it, two, there's a passion for what they're doing and why. The place, Johnston County, you know, this is the forefront of a lot of what's going on. You've got a lot of great things happening from your land use plan to taking that next step. And then the project, there again, this code, this Unified Development Update, transforming what you have from a vision into reality and giving Braston, and more importantly, the county, the tools to be able to kind of guide that growth and development and put it into something that meets the county's expectations, pure and simple. So there again, we've kind of broken this up into two phases. There's an initial Phase One, that we're gonna talk a little bit more in depth tonight, and then kind of give you a preview into Phase Two. So Phase One aspects, you know, we're starting to approach and tackle the plan development approach, the PUDs or the PUTS, looking at outlining and creating a process for the subdivision development standards. Also starting to initiate, and Cindy's gonna talk about this and has a nice graphic to kind of help illustrate this, the conservation subdivisions. And, you know, looking at, and Cindy's got an incredible stat that came from North Carolina APA about the loss of farm in Agland. And this is even more prevalent in the reason why we're proposing or gonna be looking at some sort of conservation subdivision and preserving those assets that we call Johnston County. And then, of course, looking at a couple of districts. Phase Two is going to be taking the, the new districts, getting those adopted, and creating a series of design and development standards. And I'm gonna give you a quick teaser tonight on some of these as we're moving forward. Oops. And then, of course, the ever-popular North Carolina General Statutes and Standards, as far as 160D is concerned, making sure that we're staying consistent with the state laws. So when we look So, when we look at a UDO, it's not only about the content, it's about the context. The code is the code is the code, but how do we apply it to Johnston County? What we apply or propose, and I'm just going to say generally, you know, on the east side of the county, is not going to be the same standards that we can look at on the west side of the county. There's a whole different kind of approach and feel, and so, the realistic thing is, you're probably going to end up with two sections or almost two sets of codes because, you know, where you have really true ag preservation versus where you have your infrastructure and where you're seeing some of the more of the growth. So, making sure that we're addressing those appropriately. So, what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to turn it over to Cindy. The things that you see here are going to be part of tonight's discussion, but I'm going to have Cindy kind of walk through the subdivision standards as well as the PUDs and also the conservation standards, and I'm going to come back and talk about the signage, some graphics, and some other components.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Again, happy to be here this evening. Just want to kind of start talking through a little bit about what we've been doing. You know, some of the first components that we're working on is really kind of doing a deep dive into your subdivision section of the ordinance and kind of figuring out what works, what might need some changes. Spent a lot of time talking with Brastin and staff about some of the things that they think works, some of the things that don't work. And so, we've been coming together, doing some peer research and working with our team to come up with some options for you. And one of the key things, too, is making sure that this new UDO, when it's complete, lives up to what was expected as part of your recent comp plan. You know, we've heard that you really want to have a more predictable process. You want to discourage intense residential development in places where it shouldn't be. Let's think about conservation subdivisions. Let's think about ways that we can honor the agrarian heritage of Johnston County and protect that farmland. How do we improve your design standards? How do we get more from the development community to make sure that Johnston County keeps growing and thriving? Thinking about tree canopy, thinking about tree surveys, all of these things that are currently kind of silent in your UDO, but how do we move that forward? We've heard that there's a thought about wanting to change the process of how you handle subdivisions, and we've come up with an idea for that for you. Flexibility is key, too. Let's come up with a process that gets you to the end goal, but there's not always one way to get things done. Let's give developers and the development community additional options to make things happen in the county. And then, we also want to make sure that we're really doing lots of things that makes it a lot easier for staff to understand, for you all to implement, and the developers to understand. You know, pictures do a whole lot more than words. Let's make this a much more graphic, intensive. Let's do process flow charts. Let's make sure we have great definitions so that it makes it a whole lot easier to understand and implement. A few of the other things that we've looked at from doing a deep dive into your ordinance and as well as doing some peer research is that we really want to make some big changes to your Article III. We want to move some of the standards out and really think about putting a whole new article together that is just design and development standards. That's really a common practice among peer communities. Makes a whole lot easier to implement the ordinance when you have all the standards and procedures in one place, everybody knows where to go. Right now, things are in different sections of the UDO, and it's a little hard to understand. Also, in that same vein, moving development agreements from Article III, putting that into another section. Definition section, right now, there's a lot of definitions embedded throughout the ordinance. We'd like to move all of them to one individual section of the ordinance. And, you know, throughout the ordinance, we can link them, we can highlight them so that people know that that is a word that is defined, and you can go to that section to understand what the definition is. And then, also really updating the minor and major subdivisions, talking through, how many lots do you think should be a minor subdivision? How many lots do you think triggers a major subdivision? And what's your plat process? So, again, I kind of went through quickly how the different divisions would be, but the chart on the right really is just kind of a first effort to kind of show you what we're thinking about. You know, for minor subdivisions and the major subdivisions, we are proposing moving that from being a planning board decision to having it be an administrative decision. We'd like to implement a TRC review or technical review committee approach in Johnston County where applicants will come in, they can do an optional pre-application conference if they would like with Brastin and staff, they'll submit their application, then the application will go through review through this TRC committee, and it'll be representatives from majority of the departments within the county all weighing in, looking at the subdivision, weighing it on its merits compared to the UDO. If they believe that it meets all the requirements, they let the planning director know, planning director can approve it, and they can move into plat approval. If the application is deemed efficient, then it kind of goes back through that loop again. Goes back in, the applicant has said, okay, these are the things that aren't right, this doesn't meet the code, you need to go back and try again, and then it goes back to TRC review for approval. So, these are the types of processes that we want to be working with you and staff to improve the current process, make things go a little bit faster for some of these subdivision processes. And then, again, moving into the major subdivision, one of the main changes in this is that it's not an optional, it becomes a mandatory, pre-application conference. We really believe that the major subdivisions, you know, things are getting much more complicated, and we need to have a little bit more time for review. So, we want the developers and the development community to come schedule time with staff, do the pre-application conference, submit the application, and go back through. Again, it's still an administratively approved function, but it does have the TRC review, but it has a few more layers of requirements, very detailed applications so that they make sure that we're hitting everything related to pre-application conference, thinking about a TIA, looking to see what the appropriate thresholds are for whether TRAs are needed, and then going all the way through what it takes to, once you're approved, how long you would have for preliminary plat approval expirations, and then, if you need to appeal things, what's the appropriate appeal process going through. And we'll do something similar also when it comes to the final plat approval. So, again, lots and lots of graphics, lots and lots of flow charts, lots of detailed expectations of what it would take to have an application approved and then get to a plat within Johnston County. And then, proposed structure, lots of ideas here for making sure that we're really getting the most of what we can out of development opportunities in Johnston County. All of these will have graphics to go with them, better definitions. We want to introduce the idea of streetscape buffers, trying to decide the best places within the county to include streetscape, trees planted, the width, all of that, all of that is, you know, still to be determined, things that we'll work out with staff and you and the community. We need to be talking about access and circulation and connectivity. Where is it appropriate to seek connectivity? Where is it appropriate to have circulation patterns? How much access do we need? Need to be cognizant that we don't want our neighborhoods to be racetracks, but we also don't want to keep having multiple driveways onto roads. So, having those conversations, what are the thresholds for that? And then sidewalks, also thinking about sidewalk requirements throughout the county. Obviously, there's going to be some places in the county where sidewalks probably aren't required or aren't needed, but where are those instances where we should have them, perhaps on one side of the street? And where are those instances where we do need them on two sides of the street so that we can create those connected communities where people want to be out walking? So, these are all things that we'll be working through over the next couple of months. And then, one of the things that we've also heard that is really important is the idea of introducing a conservation subdivision. And as Kelly said, I was at a conference last week for the North Carolina Planning Association, and they brought up a very interesting tidbit, and they said that between 2016 and 2040, in Johnston County, it's anticipated that nearly 53,000 acres of farmland could be lost in that time period without changes to the current UDO because, based on the low-density residential pattern that's happening right now. So, with the changes in the UDO and working with you all, we can come up with options for conservation subdivision where we're still able to bring the growth and development to Johnston County, but we're having it clustered, we're having it designed in a way that we're still providing lots of acreage for farmland and for agricultural heritage, and we're able to bring the neighborhoods in. So, this is something that a lot of the peer communities are doing. You see it right now, Chatham County just did it, Pitt County just did it, Wake County's getting ready to do it. So, all, your peers are doing this, everyone is recognizing that farmland is being taken away in record amounts, and so, everyone is now starting to look to find out ways to help that and reduce that amount. So, we will be working on that with you over the next couple of months. And then, also, PUD standards, you know, planned unit developments, looking for ways to kind of give developers an idea of people that are looking to do larger tracts of land, larger developments, you know, how can you get a customized development within what you have now, you don't really have strong PUD regulations? Now, we would be able to allow someone that wants to come in doing a sizable development and wants to do a mixture, if they want to do a mixed-use development. Let's have them come in and really talk about creating customized crafted standards that go a little bit above and beyond what the ordinance sets to be able to have a higher quality development and allow things that are a little out of the norm. So, this is one of these things that we'll also be working with you, and this page exactly shows, you know, an example of what it could be within the document. A graphic, really easy to understand, talks about variety of housing units that would be allowed, cross-sections, the relationship to the street, talks about setbacks and potential density, height, everything in one standard page so that it's very easy to understand, very easy to implement, and really, really helps provide high-crafted, high-designed development for the county. So, with that, I'll stop, but if you have any questions related to subdivisions or PUD or the process we've gone through, I'm happy to answer, or we can do this after Kelly works through some of these things.
I did have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the minor and major subdivisions, the minor was the planning director.
And major's also planning director.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So, when does, what triggers planning board and...
At this point, the only thing that would be going to planning board, we're getting into rezonings. So, planning board would be taken out of, the way we have it written right now, planning board would be taken out of minor and major. Again, that's just a suggestion. We're happy to have further conversations with you, but most of the peer communities have minor and major going through administrative review instead of taking it through a quasi-judicial or planning board approval.
But that comes in with all the details that are in there for that.
Yes, sir.
So, it's really, developers can really be certain, and the public can be certain of what's in one and what's not.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
So, signage seems pretty mundane, pretty small to some people, but it's probably one of the most controversial, one of the most overlooked items if you're not careful. So, one of the things, what we did is, you know, we looked at what is the current Johnston County code, and that's the information you see on the left. There again, nothing wrong with that, but we have looked at a number of communities across the state, whether it's Monroe or Stylings or, you know, Louisville and, you know, working with a number of other communities to come up with a series of standards like you see on the right, whereas, let's provide that image, let's actually give that illustration so when we start talking about what is a wall sign, that's what it is, and then providing a very simple, easy-to-use series of standards that goes with it. You know, when we start looking at signage, there are two landmark cases that came out from the United States Supreme Court. One's called the Reed case. Believe it or not, that was actually almost 10 years old, but it came out of Arizona and it talks about, you know, what can you do and what can you not do as a community with respect to regulating signage? You can regulate how big, where you put it, but can you differentiate between a school or some of the other things or, you know, nonprofits? Supreme Court said no. State of North Carolina has also said no on a lot of those. Another Supreme Court case was also City of Austin. So, what we're doing is going through the sign code as we speak, one, to take a look at to make sure you're consistent not only with those two cases, but also with what's being prescribed within 160D, because there's also some differentiation between political signs as well. So, there again, defining what is the various types of signs, identifying where those signs can be, and then, more importantly, how the measurements are going to be undertaken. So, it's very clear and easy to understand. Just a general approach to code graphics. This is something that we talked about with Brastin and his team early on in the process of making sure that this UDO is full of graphics and illustrations. That way, there is a text that goes with it, but then starting to illustrate, like you see here, in a very simplified manner, like Cindy was saying, with property perimeter buffers, of how wide should a buffer be? What should it look like? If they're going to provide a fence, should they be putting the fence on the inside closest to the homes or the outside closest to the road? A lot of codes stay silent to that, and what you'll start seeing is more of the fences being on the outside and all the trees being on the inside to benefit the homeowners. So, making sure there again, we've got graphics that illustrate these things, just like Cindy said, you know, looking at those roadway cross-sections, taking those standard engineering drawings and putting it into a context that somebody can relate to from a building or a street tree perspective. And then, under the design and development standards, when we start thinking about transparency or how many windows should be along the front of a building or certain things of that nature, what are we talking about and how do we kind of graphically illustrate some of that? The districts, this is something that, again, we talked about with Brastin early on, and, you know, when you look at your code, you have to go to two different sections to figure out what's going on for each of the districts from a setbacks and other types of standards. So, what you can see on the left was actually a snippet from your current code, which just identifies what are the setbacks, but then you have to go to a different section to figure out what you can do within that. So, our approach is like Cindy was showing, you know, the graphic in the middle that defines the front side and rear yards, and then, more importantly, putting all of those standards together, so everything from height to setbacks to, you know, density, lot sizes, and things of that nature, all within a simple, easy-to-use table, all within the district itself. There again, trying to consolidate and simplify the approach. Speaking of which, also making sure that the definitions that Brastin and his team have to work with are very clear. So, giving them clear definitions on what are the characteristics of certain types of uses, whether or not it's professional office, whether or not it's a restaurant, whether or not it's just a single-family home, providing those kind of characteristics so that he's not having to make just blind interpretations. There again, there's a series of standards that help guide some of that, and then getting into what are some of the accessory uses? What are some of the examples, use standards in the cases of things that we've seen before, like with a gas station associated with a convenience store, making sure that there are certain provisions that protect the adjacent residential in that case. So, where are we at this point? There are, of course, the additional Phase One considerations that our team is currently working on, so creating a couple of mixed-use districts that actually encourage both, you know, a mix of uses, whether it's residential or office or commercial on one piece of property horizontally and/or vertically, making sure, again, that, you know, where do those fit the best? Can it be just anywhere in the county? Probably not, so they need to be clearly defined, consistent with your land use plan. Creating a couple of extra residential districts, as bad as I hate to say, one of the first questions we asked Brastin was, where are the rest of these? And he goes, that's it. So, it's, you know, you've got, almost like Cindy said, it's one or nothing. So, we're trying to create some additional flexibility, both for the county but also for the development community to say, here's what we're wanting to do, and this is where it's going to fit. Making sure that we've got a concise table of uses by district so that you can go through and look at and see exactly what uses are permitted by district. So, in essence, what can I do within each of my zoning districts? And then, more importantly, things like you see on that bottom right, how we measure? What do those lots look, what lots look like, whether it's a corner lot, a through lot? How do we measure setbacks? How do we measure building height? How do we measure some of our buffers and standards? But there again, you know, providing that clear, easily-defined language that is, you know, somebody can look at that image and go, that's what I mean. And with that, Commissioners, like I said, Cindy and I are here to answer any questions. I know Brastin was kind enough to provide you all with some baseline information up to this point. Just let you know, you know, we've been working extremely hard and appreciate the fact that we've been meeting every other week with Brastin and the team to keep this fall moving, both on the Phase One and the Phase Two components.
All right. Any questions?
I have some comments. I'm not sure they're questions. And I'll talk out of both sides of my mouth because I'm to the point when Johnston County, where I really fear for the quality of life going forward. You know, I was sitting with someone the other day, we were around a table and everybody was comfortable. I said, how would it be if we doubled the seating here? How would it be if we tripled it? After a while, it gets really uncomfortable for everybody here, and that's what I'm concerned about. But at the same time, when I look at this structure, I'm concerned about freedom, freedom. That's my really mantra with government, freedom. What does it matter if somebody has more than 40% of the wall surface in signage? I mean, is that an issue with people? I don't know. A lot of this stuff appears to be like some of the municipalities we hear people talk negatively about. Some of this stuff in here that I've glanced at just at the beginning is good, like concentrate some of the density and leaving open space instead of just, you know, spreading it out. But I am concerned about freedom and the ability of somebody to get from, while I don't want to see a lot of more congestive growth, I don't want it to make it too difficult that people are dealing with us. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we could make it difficult so they don't want to come here. I don't think that's the solution.
Very, very well said.
Any other comments? And I know this is, Commissioner Smith, so I do like the framework that, where we are, I know this is kind of high-level stuff, but I do like the fact that, you know, of putting everything in one place, for anybody's ever who's gone through the process and jumping from here to there, and you've got a couple of places, is it this one or this one that applies?
And the graphics.
And the visuals, yeah. The graphics, I mean, for me personally, I'd much rather look at a picture than read it.
I mean, for me personally, I'd much rather look at a picture than read a thousand words.
Very good.
But I like, I like where we're headed with this. I appreciate the work that y'all are doing and our staff is putting into this and look forward to hearing some more updates shortly.
Absolutely. Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to manager reports and comments. Eric, I think you've got several people.
Yes, sir, Chairman, all the board members, thank you for the opportunity. I know sometime back, you know, back in July, we transitioned away from the solid waste decals. And so I think the board had asked for kind of an update on usage at those sites. So if it's okay, I'd like Mr. Brian Beasley, our Director of Solid Waste, to come and give you a brief overview. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brian.
Good evening, Chairman. Just some facts and figures that we put together. We've been monitoring the customer flow for the first three months of the sites. We can, you know, there's 12 sites throughout the county, 13 if you count the landfill site. The week of July 1st, 2023, I went back a year so you could get a figure from the decal to no decal. We did 10,505 customers that week. Fast forward to July 1st of 2024, with the first day of the decal going away, the numbers were 12,168. So it looks like a large uptick. But if you back up just one week prior to that, when we still had the decal existing, we were at 11,876. So the trend was up because of growth of the county anyway. So we went up about 1,600 customers overall from year to year. We monitored it for the first three months. We're averaging about 12,970 customers weekly, which is about 1,000 customers up on average for the year each week. So we thought it might be more, but it's manageable at this point. It's still continuing to trend in that same direction. Last week's numbers were 13,597 customers for each site or for the sites as a total. Some sites are busier than others, some have seen more growth than others. The tonnage as far as what we're hauling has stayed about the same, maybe even a little less, but we equate that to the economy. Recycling is up, so we're hauling a lot more recycling, but we're having more customers come in with that availability, so.
Any significant problems at any sites as far as citizens are concerned?
No, we haven't had, you know, really any complaints, you know, minor complaints here and there, but we address those as they arise.
Good.
Any other questions? And I can get you any of these facts and send them to you.
Go ahead.
My question is that, has there been any noticeable impact on the amount of trash that otherwise would be in the road ditches that we're seeing by now having the ability to dispose of it without a fee?
I would hope so, that was your goal.
Yeah.
In creating easily accessible trash, access to the dumps for everyone. So at least on the areas that we're seeing, we're not getting a lot of calls and complaints about littering like we were. So hopefully, it will decrease over time.
Yeah. I frequent one site repeatedly, and I have noticed different people, new people that haven't been there before. And I remember asking one citizen, wonder where that trash was going before?
Yes.
It's a ditch across the aisle.
Yeah.
And I would just say, if we could, end of the year started, next year, give us another update on kind of what you see. But appreciate the work you and your staff are doing on that.
You know, with the rapid growth we're having, it probably is difficult to discern, which is the change in just growth numbers as far as freebies.
That's exactly what I was thinking, the change in the, you know, what was the rate before? And what's the difference between the rate with no decals? That's probably a blend of a number to whatever.
Sub variables there is hard to measure.
It is.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There are two issues that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. The first issue relates to Isaiah 117 House. And you may recall, you received a presentation about that initiative some time ago. And at your direction and the direction of the DSS Board and the Director, I spent some time working with Ms. Julie Dixon, who was the North Carolina State Director for Isaiah 117 House, to better understand the proposal that was being made in Johnston County and to see if that would be something that could potentially be beneficial to the citizens in Johnston County. As you may recall, Isaiah 117 House is currently raising awareness and taking steps to open a location in Johnston County that serves as a temporary transitional space for the Department of Social Services employees to serve custodial children awaiting foster care placement in a safe, child-friendly environment. Isaiah 117 House also offers space at its locations for Department of Social Services supervised visitation between children and their families. And they offer amenities such as kitchenettes with snacks and refrigerators and microwaves and living and dining areas with activities, games, toys, bathrooms, those sorts of things. As you know, the mission of Johnston County Department of Social Services is to serve, aid, and protect needy and vulnerable children and adults in ways that strengthen and preserve families. After a review of this proposed initiative, we do believe that this additional resource in Johnston County could be beneficial to the children and families that we serve. The DSS Board at their last meeting voted to write a letter of support for this initiative and to support Isaiah 117's houses' desire to establish a location in Johnston County. As you may recall, there's no investment that's being requested from Johnston County for this project. It is, it is a self-funded initiative. But nonetheless, I wanted to update you as to, as to where we are. On October the 29th, there is going to be, Isaiah 117 House is hosting an awareness luncheon and a dinner. There are representatives from Johnston County that will be attending that October 29th noon meeting. And I understand that the chairman may be attending the evening session for that event. But that'll be an opportunity for us to learn more about this organization. And so I just wanted to let you know that the DSS Board and the Director support the initiative to establish a location in Johnston County and was curious to get feedback from you as to whether or not that was a consensus of this board as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Would this initiative coming under any other purview such as mental health, People's Alliance, that sort of thing?
No, sir, not, not really. This is more of a respite transitional space for children that are coming into custodial care. But honestly, the thing that Johnston County is the most excited about is the opportunity to have some supervised visitation space in a, in a place that mimics a home, which would be very beneficial to those families in, in our attempt to strengthen and preserve those families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do you need just the consensus?
Just a consensus of the board to move forward. And again, before, before anything really happens, happens with the department, there would have to be a memorandum of understanding and those sorts of things. But it's premature at this point to engage in that portion of the process because the space has not been, has not been built at this time. But they, but Isaiah 117 House certainly wanted to know that they were welcome in Johnston County before they made that significant investment.
All right. Is everyone in favor of that letter of support? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. The next thing that I wanted to talk with you about was a technical amendment to the personnel policy. And the purpose of this amendment is to clarify emergency pay when providing mutual aid to the state and other local governments during an emergency. And this actually came up as we started deploying assets and resources to Western North Carolina. And in, in reviewing our policy, it, it was unclear as to how that, that should work. And because this is important for FEMA reimbursements if we chose to submit, and it also supports those employees that are selected by the Emergency Services Director for deployment in cases of an emergency. And this technical amendment, all it does is add language that, that not only reflects when the Johnston County Emergency Operations Center is fully activated, it also allows for Johnston County to provide aid and assistance pursuant to a mutual aid agreement to the state or another local emergency management agency. And it would just clarify how we pay. This technical amendment has been voted by the county manager, the county finance officer, the county emergency services director, the HR director, and the internal auditor.
I know, I thought your memo to us explained it very well. Do you need a board action?
Yes, please.
So you need a vote?
I move that we approve the action.
I have a second.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Technical amendment to the personnel policy, any other discussion?
I had one question. We've got some very conscientious people working for the county. If someone wanted to take it upon themselves to go help out and they took personal leave, that wouldn't apply to this at all.
That is correct. It's only when you are deployed as part of the state Emergency Operations Center and you are assigned for an operation by the Emergency Services Director.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Okay, that brings us to board reports and comments. Mr. Smith, anything for you tonight?
It's hard to hold the whole half up by yourself.
You're doing a great job, you're doing a great job.
Especially on the left side.
All right, Mr. Stevens. Commissioner Stovall. Commissioner McDonald, I can count on you, I can count on you.
I want, well, I want to remind everybody about the green light initiative for veterans. Be sure to display your green light in the window or on the front porch. I think my neighbors are enjoying my green light. My dog gets suspicious of it every time he goes out. The other thing is, I wanted to make sure everybody knows about it and is invited to the veterans event. We've had it every year, there's been some, some missing years during COVID. But at Triple S High School in the gym on November the 11th, 11 o'clock, that's a couple of weeks away. We're going to have a good speaker, a local businessman who was a combat helicopter pilot in Vietnam, will be our speaker. I think it'll be an enjoyable program and a meaningful program as it has in the past.
All right, and I don't piggyback, and I'm going to come with half the information. I know we have an event also on the 12th with a video presentation. Is that the Ag Center or JCP? We'll get, we'll get all the information for the next meeting, that's why I mess it all up.
Yeah, that's right.
That's community college. Okay, yeah, yeah, so make sure that folks are available for that. I did have a couple of things. One is we had a couple of representatives from Johnston County receive the Dogwood Award, I think this week. We had 911 Communications for some work that they did in Western North Carolina. I think it was in Haywood County. And then also our District Attorney, Susan Doyle, also was a recipient of that award. Again, we've already talked about Employee Appreciation Week this week. And again, a big thank you to all our employees for, for making our jobs so much easier up here. Third thing is, we have had, typically in February of the last few years, a strategic planning retreat for this board. And we are looking tentatively right now at February the 20th and 21st of having that at a site to be determined later. And finally, just an update on the replacement for District 3 Commissioner. We have had four applications, one has been withdrawn, so we're currently at three. The application deadline is 3 o'clock this Friday. We are planning to review all the applications, and there will be an interview process with the, ultimately a decision made on November the 18th. And the swearing-in will be on December the 2nd. So that's the schedule that we are, have planned right now. So that is, and that is all that I have. And we do have a need for a closed session, and I do not anticipate there will be any action taking place after that closed session.
All right, Mr. Chairman. I move the board go into closed session for the purposes of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCG S 143 318 11A3.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of going into closed session for those reasons, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go into closed session after a second to clear the room.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.